Welcome to the February 27th work session, everyone here and at home. The first item up is a continuation of the conversation we've been having on the MPT. So, the manager.
Mayor, we're here just to answer questions if you need us to be...
So will you just do two sentences about what MPT is and what it... Because it's just an acronym all by itself, so...
Okay. And I'll let Denny do that.
Yes, the multi-unit property tax exemption program. Council had a work session and asked us to bring back an ordinance to suspend the program. We had a public hearing on Monday evening of this week, and what council is considering today is an ordinance to suspend the multi-unit property tax exemption program, MPT, for the purpose of pausing and taking a look at the program to make some decisions if any program changes need to be made.
Thank you for that. There's always a chance that somebody new is watching that isn't in the conversation yet. So I'm just going to make a couple of comments and then we'll maybe go around once and then we'll put a motion on the table. So I just want to make the comment that I think the MPT is a valuable tool for achieving the kind of development we want where we want it, and it's one of the few tools that we have. And I certainly agree with many of you and Counselor Brown that we need increased qualification requirements and complete information regarding the fiscal impact of our MPT investment. And my concerns actually are, and I told Counselor Brown I would support this suspension, but I want to be sure that we have a date certain for when it ends, and I am of the mind that probably June would be an adequate amount of time to finish the work on it. And I want to be sure either in the motion or in the minutes of this meeting that we're clear that we're trying to make it work more effectively, but our intention is to use the MPT in the future for the kind of development we want in our community. And those two things are really important to me in getting my support if it's needed. Okay, so with that, I'll just go around. And Counsel President, do you have any comments you want to make about it?
Just briefly, I think that by suspending the MPT ordinance, that we're sending mixed messages, and I think that we should keep it in place while we do a review and possible revision. I too agree that there should be some changes done to it, but I just think that to temporarily take away this tool is the wrong thing for us to be doing, and if somebody should submit an application and gets processed through to us before such time, the council comes back to revisit this again, that we always have as a council the opportunity to vote no on approval. So I just think we should keep it in place for the time being.
Counselor Brown?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Contrary to a lot of the testimony that we heard on Monday night at the public hearing, the sky is not falling. No one, nobody is suggesting that we sunset the program. I think that was a common misperception. The review that I foresee will not be a hostile confrontation between counselors or neighborhood advocates and staff or developers. It'll be just the opposite. I think it will be an interesting, exciting collaboration with all of the stakeholders: city staff and council, neighbors, lenders, developers, builders, and taxpayers. We will craft a sensible reprogramming that nearly everybody will support. And after we do that, we'll extend it to other areas to support the goals of Envision Eugene. But we have to craft the instrument first. That has to come first before we think about extending it out to 99 West 11th, wherever we may want to use it. And I agree with what the mayor said, it's a very useful instrument to promote development and redevelopment of troubled areas. I'm all for using this, but we need to use it more sensibly in a way that guarantees broader, real, concrete, community benefits. I don't think it's doing that right now. I think a lot of the other councils agree with me on that point. So, and the idea is not to make MPT so restrictive that no one applies. What would be the point of doing that? That would be silly. We want to make it attractive to developers. So, we have a model. Portland Housing Bureau will be a tremendous resource. Every time I've called them or emailed them, they responded instantly and answered all my questions. They were eager to. They were happy to share. And I know it will be that way for staff, too. So, how long will it take for the makeover? I'm thinking months, certainly not years. I'm okay with the target date. So I have an intended motion, and I suppose that would be...
No, why don't you wait, George? I just want to go around once and then we'll put a motion on the table. Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been giving this a lot of thought. I absolutely agree, based on what I've seen, is that MPT needs to be reworked. The city is not getting nearly the kind of benefits that it should be getting during the period of the tax exemption. Ten years is a long time, but we need to have this kind of investment in our community. And this is one of the key tools that we do have in a toolbox where we only have a wrench and a screwdriver to be able to affect investment in the community and particularly investment in developing housing units, which are going to be desperately needed as we continue to grow over the years. With that, I also am looking at the fact that I think that we can rework this tool and recraft it without having to go through the exercise of suspending the ordinance. And while I, you know, I've kind of really wrestled with George's position on this, I'm really strongly in favor of us accelerating the time in which we deal with MPT, that we should be working on it now as a council, and that we should be ready to have a revised statute somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 90 days. I will suggest an addendum after George makes his motion to have a specific date to sunset the suspension. Is it there? Okay, you got July, yeah, July 1. I, you know, I don't know whether that is enough time or too much time. I think I would prefer a 60-day cap on it. I think we can get it done in 60 days if that's what the will of the body is in terms of suspension. But I will not support the motion based on those things that I just articulated. I think we can do this without suspending the ordinance, and I think that we can do it effectively, quickly, to make this a more viable tool that will benefit the citizens of Eugene. So with that, I'm done, Mayor.
Eddie.
Thank you. Well, I'm one who would probably like to abandon it altogether, and I think it has been much misused. The only reason I would support this tax exemption is if there's a clear benefit to the city. And there've been a few places in the heart of downtown where I thought it was a clear benefit while we are trying to revive downtown. Incidentally, I hope you all read Tim Dewey's article in the Register-Guard. If you haven't seen it, I don't have it with me right now, but where he said, and I think he's one that the conservative members of the council might respect as well as the so-called liberals, whatever we are. I do think that, I don't think we need to, if there's a need for housing and if people, if developers want to invest and make money, I think they'll do it. I don't think we have to give them a tax exemption. I can't tell you how many people have said to me, "I would like a tax exemption." I mean, there are people out all over town who are having real problems paying their property taxes and don't know how they're going to do it, and they hear of us giving 10-year tax exemptions to people. I guess we'd all be willing to make our houses more environmentally friendly and better looking if we got a 10-year tax exemption. That would go a long ways toward making some improvements. I think that we have given, it's been much, much misused what we have even, and once we say there are some things that you have to do, then people seem to make the assumption that if they do those, we have to give the exemption, which is not true. If you say you have to do this and this in order to get it, it doesn't mean you do that and you get it. It's not automatic. Even the current one wasn't supposed to be automatic, but it's turned out to be automatic pretty much. So I'm, I will vote for suspension, and I know that eliminating it is not going to happen. Thank you.
Alan.
Yeah, I agree with the folks that said we need to retool this program and make sure that it gets benefits back to the city. After all, we're partnering with people to give them a property tax incentive to do the things we want, which is dense, multi-family, multi-unit housing in certain areas of the city. And so I agree that we need to revamp this tool, and I've put forth a couple of different recommendations. I think the suspension, if we follow my suggestions and George's suggestions, then it could be substantive. And I think that, and the city council's actually done this before, where we suspended it, revised it, and brought it back. And then I know that if the, I think if we know that the program's going to change, and it may change substantively, I think it sends mixed signals that we're going to have two different programs. So if we're going to change it, let's change it, get the rules out there, and then restart it. I think it's a very valuable tool to get us the kind of denser housing that we want in certain areas, and with some modifications, I can support it. And while I appreciate the optimism of a new counselor, 60 days, in my experience, is probably not realistic in terms of being able to do that, especially if we intend to, which I think we do, have stakeholder engagement in this process about the revisions to it. So with that process, I think actually four months is probably about the minimum we could probably do this in. So the motion that's going to be put forth actually says we have to the end of June to do this. And I think that's an appropriate amount of time to go ahead and look at the things we want to look at, do that investigation, engage stakeholders, revise it, and bring it back, and then we can, we don't even need to unsuspend the program, and it'll just be ready to go July 1 with new rules, and I think that's sufficient time.
Claire.
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation. I am kind of on the fence about whether suspension is necessary to review the program, so I'm willing to be convinced one way or the other. I do obviously think there's good consensus about reviewing the program, and I guess my concern is if we don't suspend it, one, there is this issue of accepting applications on a program that's in flux, but also just the urgency might get lost. My understanding is that Counselor Brown asked for this work session some months ago, and it took a long time before it got on our agenda. So one thing that the suspension would do is incentivize us and city staff to make this a priority and to do the process for the review in a timely manner. We've had folks from the community ask us to do both. Folks have asked us not to suspend while we review, and we've also had public input saying, "Please do suspend while you do the review." So I don't think there's a clear message one way or another on that, although folks have been very supportive of the idea of the review itself, so I think that is a positive thing. So that's where I'm at right now.
Mike.
Suspending MPT for four months is a solution in search of a problem. I agree with everybody at the table that says, that has said that it's a good idea for us to evaluate the criteria under the standards of, does this provide enough community benefit in its current form for us to maintain this incentive? I'm fine with that conversation. That's a wonderful one and a worthwhile one. But there's no practical, good reason to suspend it for four months in the interim. No less than a very conservative, right-wing sort of fellow, David Funk, wrote us four and a half hours ago in an email, that in the past 40 years, I have never been encouraged about our downtown as I am today. We don't need a moratorium right now. With a MPT moratorium, we could miss out on opportunities that would meet our objectives. We have clear objectives in Envision Eugene and all the things that we've been spending so much time trying to create with our planning department. We've asked people, well, we demand of people frankly, that they pay a certain wage. We demand that they get a certain number of permits. We demand that they do their business in a certain fashion to meet the standards of the city of Eugene, and that's fine. That's to be expected with our community. But we offer the incentives as a way for them to still actually be able to put a project together that can make them money in the process. Suspending this for four months only says, "We're closed for business for four months." I don't think that's the message we should send. If one owns a business, say, I don't know, a grocery store, for example, one wants to retool the employee benefits program and the rules around how employees are dealt with, you don't close the store and fire everybody for four months while you do that work. You keep the business operating and you keep the work going that is of benefit while the work to renew the program takes place. So I certainly hope we don't shoot ourselves in the foot this way.
Chris.
Thank you. I really appreciate the conversation that's been going on around the table, and one of the things I appreciate the most are the points of commonality, which is where I always tend to go. What I hear is everybody saying the MPT program after this many years is due for some review and some retooling, and we all agree with that, and I appreciate that. The question then becomes, how fast can we do it? How effectively can we do it? And how can the outcome of that review be the best that this body can do? So that really guides me in terms of my thinking on, should we suspend while we do that deliberate job, or should we not suspend? And I really appreciate the fact that we've built a date certain into this, because I think that if it doesn't do anything else, it sends our intention to work on this program and bring it back. So if there are sufficient votes to pass this suspension, having this date certain in here, I think will definitely send a much better message to the community that this is not a secret back behind-the-scenes way to get rid of it. At least, I believe that's sincere. At the same time, though, and this is following on with Greg's point, can we do the work sessions, the public input, the expert knowledge, which I agree, we do need some expert knowledge input, the public hearings and the council discussion at an accelerated pace because of a suspension? And I don't think 60 days, I would worry that four months would give us adequate time, but I'm willing to believe that we would just really move as quickly as we could to get it done. So I guess what I would say is, well, I won't vote for the suspension, not because I don't think the world will end necessarily, but because I don't want to send a signal to the community that says, "We're, you know, we're wanting to suspend this while we look at it." And I appreciate both sides of the argument why we should or shouldn't. I think that's fine. We'll make a decision today, and that'll be great. We'll move forward. But what I do want to say is, if we should create this suspension, it will need to have this date certain in it, and I will encourage us to move not only as swiftly as we can, but also as thoughtfully as we can. I want to make sure we have good public input, we have an opportunity for people to speak, and that we get the expert perspective on this that's really going to be helpful in helping us decide what we need to do. I'm not pretending to be an expert on downtown development, and I'm not pretending to be an expert on all aspects of MPT. I'll depend on some people to do that. We'll have to make the decision, but the more input we have, the better. If we can do that in four months, we will need to make sure we do that effectively. So I don't know the outcome of the vote, but those are my best outcomes either way, is that we come up with a good, retooled MPT in a way that's most effective. But I won't support the suspension simply because I don't symbolically want to send that message, but that's the primary reason why.
I'm going to turn to George to put a motion on the table, and then I'm guessing we're going to substitute motion from this George, and so we'll do it that way. But before that, I just wanted to say two things. One is, I think, in response to what we heard last night and the concern that people have about the MPT in both ways, that I think a time certain actually makes a strong statement that we're just going to pause it, work on it, and then put it back into motion again. I think that the period of time till the end of June or the 1st of July is a reasonable amount of time to do this in a pretty expeditious way. And the only other suggestion I would have for you to consider is, and it could be more than that or less than that, I don't care, but because I've seen Alan and George Brown have so much concern about this, that I suggest they work with staff to get all this stuff on the table and get it dealt with very expeditiously, and by the time we have a council meeting about this in April, that they already have a pretty good idea of what it is we want to take a look at. So we'll be refining it after that, so we can just move right along. So that would be my suggestion if you all are in agreement with that and I offer them or encourage them, or whatever word I can use, to take leadership on this after we leave this today. So with that, you want to put the first motion on, then we'll go to the substitute?
Do you have a question? Is it feasible or is it possible that the staff can come back by July 1 with the proposed revisions for the council to review?
Excuse me, that, yes. But what I am hearing is that July 1 would be, you would have to adopt a new ordinance at that time, which we also could do by then. And whether you choose to suspend it or not, I think part of the message we will take with us is urgency is important, and so we will work in that way to get it done as soon as possible. So whichever way you choose to vote on this, we will be doing that. But the answer is yes, we could do that.
All right, thank you. All right. There's a motion that I'm going to put out. I moved, I moved, let me start over again. I moved not to adopt Council Bill 5091, the ordinance suspending the MPT program, and to direct the city manager to come back with proposed revisions, come back to the council with proposed revisions no later than July 1, 2013.
I'll second.
Seconded. All right, George, did you want to make a substitute motion?
Yes. Actually, my motion is to amend the ordinance that we have. We already haven't, the staff have already crafted, and we had the public hearing on. So I'd like to just read a statement and then tell what the amendment is. "The city council believes that MPT is one of the few tools we have available to help us create higher-density, multi-unit housing in certain areas. Our intent is to suspend the program temporarily while we refine and retool the program. The ordinance suspending the MPT program should be automatically repealed on July 1. This should allow us time to investigate potential changes and to engage the various stakeholder groups and to revise the program rules. Therefore, I move to adopt the revised ordinance with the title 'An Ordinance Temporarily Suspending Multiple-Unit Property Tax Exemptions' under Sections 2.945 and 2.947 of the Eugene Code." And you will see in the revised ordinance, really about the only change is Section 3 has been added, which says, "This ordinance shall automatically sunset and be repealed on July 1, 2013." And I'd like to speak to that if I get a second.
And then I think that's him coming, he wants to make about it.
I'd like to clarify that I think your motion is actually a motion to substitute for the main motion, a motion to adopt the revised ordinance.
Yes.
And that the revised ordinance that he's talking about was just handed out to everybody. In addition to adding the Section 3, there is added to the title the word "temporarily", and there is a change to Section 1 that says that no applications would be accepted until after this ordinance has been repealed, as opposed to what the ordinance had said, proposed ordinance before had said, until after the council completed its review. So if you adopt this the way it's been revised, it will automatically be repealed as of July 1. And if you haven't adopted something new, then what's in place today would just go back into place.
And I want to clarify, then I'll let you make your statement, George, that this does not affect things that are already in the queue.
Correct. This suspension would not apply to any application that has been filed to date and would not affect any application that is filed, if there are any, before the effective date of this ordinance. It doesn't have an immediate effective date, so this ordinance doesn't go into place for 30 days. So if somebody applied tomorrow, the existing rules would still apply to them.
Okay, George, do you want to make a statement?
Yeah, I just, I think we've all pretty much said what we need to say about this, and we're just going to decide which way we want to vote on it. But I'd just like to add, we keep hearing that this will send a terrible message to the development community. I think it's just the opposite. I think the development community is looking for clarity. I know the community at large is, and all the other stakeholders. So, you know, we've had, since the Capstone project came along, there's been exactly one, one application in 14 months, the Core Campus Hub proposal. So it's not like there's zillions of developers knocking at the door, trying to get, take advantage of this MPT. It's a, a temporary suspension is the prudent thing to do. It actually sends a very positive message to the development community. I think that everyone's going to be really happy with the results. I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a great thing. I think we're going to come up with a superior product that everybody's going to like, so... Thanks.
Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I am certainly not in the construction business, so I'm not familiar with all of details of something, but it occurs to me that most of the construction one sees on projects like these occurs during the summer and the fall, where one arranges the financing and these type of things in the winter and the spring. So it seems to me as though we are, as Mr. Funk mentioned, if there were opportunities in the offing, we're saying maybe next year with this as the ability for them to even put in the application now becomes July. I don't know, as I said, as much as many do about the construction business, but it would seem to me that gives a very limited window of time to construct a project once this is back in place and to organize it for this year. So if one needs to take advantages of this for the purpose of their project. And we don't know what is in the offing or what's potentially being ready to be submitted that may meet all of the criteria that we finally come up with in the end. I think it's unfortunate, because I hear all of the discussion around why we need to revise this, and I don't disagree that that's a good conversation, but I haven't heard anything that convinces me that it's necessary to turn the switch off for four months and then turn it back on, that that solves a particular problem. We are all in the position to decide whether any project that would be submitted, and any application submitted in that four-month window, meets the public benefit or not. We could all make that decision in that timeframe. So the only thing we're doing is saying, "We're closed for business for this time period," and I think it's a mistake.
So I have Claire, Greg, Alan, and George Brown in the queue, and I'll just make a comment here that I think by having a date certain and a period of time that we're working on that, we're being very transparent, everyone will know the rules and be able to line up their applications, knowing that accordingly. And I would make the statement that at least this winter, we just saw one of those MPT projects just completed, so I don't think they are necessarily time, season-sensitive. Claire.
Yeah, so with the clarification from the city attorney that if we pass this ordinance temporarily suspending, it wouldn't actually go in effect till 30 days from today. So that, in effect, it would really only be a three-month suspension total, and folks would have a full month now if they're considering, they're putting a project together right now to get that application in before the program is suspended for the limited amount of time called for by this proposed ordinance. So that's actually making me inclined to support Counsel Brown's motion. So that's actually making me inclined to support Council Brown's motion. I think the date certain of ending this temporary suspension is better in terms of broadcasting intentions than an ongoing review process that might spill out for many, many months if we don't have the deadline attached to it for the work that we're trying to accomplish. And that, I think, creates more uncertainty about what's going to happen with the program. So with those things factored in, at this point, I'm inclined to support Council Brown's motion.
Greg?
Well, given my status as a novice in this arena, I'll take the liberty of asking staff a novice question, and that is, if we, during the period of the suspension, are able to get through our work plan faster than what we anticipate before the July 1 sunset, do we have the opportunity to revisit and to, you know, do away with the temporary suspension?
Otherwise, any ordinance we brought back to you would make this go away at the same moment that you adopted the new criteria. So the answer is yes, it would. If you came up with the new criteria, you know, on April 30th, and you got to go through the public hearing process, the ordinance that we would ask you to adopt would have another section in it that says, this temporarily suspension ordinance is actually repealed sooner than July 1. It would get repealed the same date the new ordinance went into effect.
Yeah, and much like Congress, when their backs are to the wall, they usually kind of get things done when they have to get it done. Hopefully they'll do it, hopefully they'll do it on Friday.
That analogy.
Well, I hope they do it on Friday, trust me. If they get it done on Friday, great, you know.
It's an excellent analogy.
All right, Alan?
Well, I was going to say, nothing keeps your feet to the fire like a deadline, but after that, I don't think I'll say that.
We are not Congress.
Yeah, we're not Congress. My experience of how things work is nothing keeps your feet to the fire like a deadline, and the city operates on deadlines. Things that have deadlines get chugged along, and things that don't get kind of pushed aside until they get a deadline.
Okay, George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have one final comment. You know, as a practical matter, this fear of hanging up somebody who may or may not be wanting to make an application for this summer's construction, I think that's probably already passed. I mean, I, we're going to have 30 days to accept any applications that would, you know, be judged by the old criteria. That's too late. If you submit at the end of March, and you're thinking that you're going to start your construction in June, it's simply not possible to get the review through the Planning Commission and through the City Council, and line up all your loans, and get your equity partners all in line. And I just, I don't, I don't, I think that's kind of a red herring to worry about that. There's only, there's only one that we know of, and we haven't even reviewed the application yet, so.
Another word?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. My original point when beginning this conversation was that I agree that MuPTI is not a good way for us to conduct business. The real challenge that we have is the costs and the regulatory process make it overburdeningly, that's the wrong word, is overburdensome, and by comparison, more expensive to construct things here. And you've just helped me illustrate the very point I was making, George, is that it takes months and months, where in many places it does not, and it costs more here than it does in many, many places. That's the actual problem, not whether or not we have the MuPTI.
Oh, I think we'll just move right on. Oh, Betty, okay.
I want a last word, too. The real problem is that we don't require a clear public benefit. And because we never require it, we just automatically approve these things, the applicants assume that they'll automatically be approved, and that is not, I think we should, we need to clarify that there must be a clear public benefit. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate.
Of the substitute motion?
Pardon? 1, 2, 3, 4. In opposition, 1, 2, 3, 4. So, as I earlier stated, if we had a date certain, end of June, first of July, if there was going to be transparency in what was it people could expect, if we wanted to use the MuPTI in the future, and our goal is to keep MuPTI in play, to achieve the kind of development we'd like to have happen, I can support the moratorium, and so I'm going to do it, and so it passes.
Well, now that now becomes the main motion, right?
Comes the main motion, right. And so we'll go back to the main motion. All those in support of the main motion as amended, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4. In opposition, 1, 2, 3, 4. 5 in favor, and so it passes. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make one quick comment? So what we will be doing then, over the next couple of weeks, will be contacting each counselor to get your perspective and input on the MuPTI changes that you think would be appropriate, and then that'll help us as we come together in April. We'll have already done a lot of that.
So, city manager, when you, I'm sorry, when you just said that, you said what everybody here thought, but I think we've been getting communications through email and from other.
And we'll be touching bases with a variety of people. I just wanted to make sure, from this perspective, that we'll be touching bases with all of you as well.
And I just want to encourage people who are listening, or who are concerned, or have specific things that they think we should be paying attention to as we do this, if they weigh in, and let us know that they want to be part of that discussion. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the arts and economic prosperity. City manager?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be turning over to Renee, but really, this is, as you know, it really started several years ago around economic prosperity and regional economic prosperity through the JEO and other efforts. What we've been wanting to do is continually talk about this, and also in light of, you might remember, as part of our Budget Action Plan, the very first item was, is how do we grow our tax base in alignment and in accordance with Envision Eugene principles? And so I think this is a good tie-in to how the arts and culture really provide a portion of that economic prosperity for our community.
Okay, thank you. Brenda's getting going here. We're trying out a new non-PowerPoint, so we're going to do some hand signals, because the clicker doesn't work. So today, as John mentioned, we're going to review the results of the Economic Prosperity Study 4, the fourth edition, and also give you just a brief update of some of the art-related activities that are going on downtown that really are economic development-supporting. So, okay, to start off, the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study is a nationwide study conducted by the Americans for the Arts. It's the most comprehensive study they have ever done. This is the fourth version. And the really good thing is, this is the first version that Eugene has been actually included in. So we actually have data that is Eugene-specific, and we can draw from actual experience, which is a really good thing. All 50 states and the District of Columbia participated. Over 180 regions, cities, counties, districts were involved. And it was facilitated in Eugene by the University of Oregon's Center for Community Arts and Cultural Policy, the Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene, and our Cultural Services Division with the city. All right, Brenda? The data that was collected for the survey, and that's kind of hard to see, but you have it in your hands, and also the packet included the actual study results in more detail, so I'm going to keep it pretty high-level here. The study included data from 29 nonprofit arts organizations. So this study is regarding nonprofits only. Those 29 organizations represent about 30% of the nonprofit arts and culture-related organizations in Eugene. So the numbers that you see are very impressive, yet very conservative. This was all voluntary data by the organizations that provided the services. Arts and culture organizations, organizations contributed about $29.5 million in economic activity. And the expenses of their audience add another $16.1 million, which gives us that $45.6 million of local economic development impact. Not only is the, are the expenditures driving economic impact, the spending of those organizations and audiences also result in some significant other revenues and outcomes. One being, 1,739 jobs are created through these 29 organizations. That includes jobs that are created by the organizations themselves, as well as the audiences, audience spending. So when you think of an audience spending, that's, you go to the event, and then you go out to eat at a restaurant, you buy parking, you do all the other things that kind of add up to additional economic input or income and jobs. We also have over 35, almost 35,000 in household income that's created, which are wages, salaries, contract revenue, and local government income, which for us represents transient room tax, property tax, gas tax, those types of revenues, and also state revenue, which would be state income, tax revenue primarily. So to give an idea of the, a little deeper into the audience spending, the survey that was conducted reached almost a million attendants, people attending the events. As you can see on the right, the per-person average spending is much higher for non-residents than for residents. So you can imagine the reason for this is that people that are coming from out of town are staying in hotels, spending more on their meals and other ancillary costs associated with it. So this does show that the nonprofit organizations in this study are primarily residents. I do want to qualify that, though. The study region that considered residents is Lane County is considered a resident. So, you know, Lane County is as big as some states in other study areas, so that's, you know, it may be slightly skewed to the residents being considered all living right here in this community. This is important to us, because we do, as we talk about our economic development habits and areas we want to focus, 15% of the audience spending, that represents 15% of the audience really being tourism-related from out-of-town business. We'd really like to see that change and bump that up for obvious reasons. And I mentioned how people are spending their dollars. The, if you take into consideration the resident spending and the non-resident spending, that comes out to $17.18 per person, per time that they attend an event. So it's primarily in the meals portion, we like to eat, before and after, during, and then you can see various other strands where people will pay for babysitters, or, you know, buy gas going to and from the event, parking, other souvenirs, gifts, that type of thing. So how do we stack up? We're pretty awesome, from the way I can see it. These figures are compared to other study regions of similar size communities, 100 to 249,000 residents. Our total expenditures in this community are $45 million, as compared to the average $23 million in other communities. The number of jobs created, and these are full-time equivalent jobs, not number of actual jobs, so full, you know what FTE is, 1,739 for us, and an average of 836 for other communities. Resident household income shares that same trend. We're a little closer on the local government revenue, and as you might imagine, state government revenue, we're lower, and I would, I would think that that's related to our sales tax, or lack of sales tax primarily. So those are the results of the data. I hit it pretty quick. Carm handed out a couple of flyers that reiterate the results of this. And also, there's one sheet here that talks about the Arts Appreciation Index, which is another component of the study. And it talks about really how active our community is in the arts. As you'll see, that Eugene is high in a number of areas, high in volunteerism, high in the actual number of people that actually produce art, or are active participants in art, not just audiences. The number of young people that are active, which is encouraging, that young adult, and anyway, so that's on that sheet. Any questions on the economic prosperity piece of this?
No?
Why don't we do that, and then I can go over what's going on downtown?
Okay, so I've got Mike and Greg in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, Renee, if you could tell me, this is wonderful, by the way, thank you. Arts and culture are an obviously huge part of our community's economy. It's a, the impact is really clear. When this says arts and culture, I understand the arts pretty clearly. I wonder if you could help me understand what sort of things, and those who are watching, what sort of things are included when you say arts and culture has a $45 million impact on our economy in a year?
Well, if you take a look at this sheet.
Sure.
These are the participating organizations. So they could be performing arts organizations, they could be arts advocacy, like the Lane Arts Council, visual arts, performing arts, the libraries included in programmings they offer, literary arts.
I just wanted to say, because I like, I think it's always helpful for me to see things in a comparative sense, we're talking about a fairly massive number of people and a fairly massive effort that's very important of our community, and has a $45 million impact on the local economy and money spent in the process. Well, comparatively, one project, the hub, one project, has a $44 million impact on our community. The exact same as an entire year of arts and culture has the exact same effect on the economy. And I thought it was instructive for us to see the importance of what we were talking about before. If we've cut off one project that could have taken place, it's the same as cutting out arts and cultures' economic impact for an entire year. Thank you.
Greg? And then Alan?
Well, I have a little bit of a different take on this, and I want to kind of get into a little bit of this. I really am impressed with what we've done in this area, and I want to commend you, Renee, on what your team has done here. I think it's incredibly encouraging. What I'd like to see us do is develop a signature event for Eugene. I know that we're a tract town now, but we will not always get Olympic trials every four years. I have a feeling that they, other cities may tend to outbid us for those kinds of events, and those will go around, and maybe another 16 years, or 10, or 12 years, it'll come back again. And we, you know, have our football team, which brings in a lot of dollars into the community. But we also, I think, are missing the boat in terms of developing those signature events that will attract people from not just this area in Oregon, but from around the country, even around the world. I know that, you know, Ashland has the Shakespeare Festival, which has that kind of, sort of year-round vibe with some specific, you know, times during the year at which there's a lot of people that come into Ashland to see that. We used to have the Mount Hood Jazz Festival years ago, up there in the Portland area, and, you know, there are other places like Albuquerque who have built similar festivals around the art. arts and other things that they have to offer. New Orleans has the Essence Jazz Festival. I'd like to see us have a Smooth Jazz Festival, you know, that we can get, you know, some niche of a market that has a growing popular following, and that we can cultivate that and be able to bring that in and incorporate that into the profile of the city. I think it would be highly attractive. I think it would be beneficial. Having put on a number of conferences and events over the last 20-some-odd years in this community, once you get people here, you know, they really embrace the community and they come back over and over again. But it's to get them here is the main thing, I think, is the key strategy. So I would like to see us develop more events in the arts and cultural realm that will give us that kind of pull and that kind of attraction. I think we're missing a great opportunity here and like to, you know, look at more of those opportunities being examined and explored.
And you will be really glad to know that when I go over my, what's going on downtown next piece of it, that there is something that, not the Smooth Jazz Festival idea, but another thing that you will be seeing coming, so.
We'll get to that.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
I won't have bony chains.
I do.
Yeah.
I know we could all add something to this conversation, and I have Alan and Chris in the queue. I just wanted to say, though, that what we're talking about with this investment in our, oh, Claire.
Thank you.
With this investment is not a one-time investment, this is an every-year investment. This is an ongoing $45 million coming into our community. Also doesn't represent one-time jobs, it represents ongoing jobs for a vast number of people and vast amounts of resources going into their personal incomes as well. And just because, I want to say this, Greg, is that the BACH Festival is a huge signature...
I forgot about that.
Oh, be a couple yourself.
You know.
I said be a couple of yourself.
Yeah, yeah, I listen to more George Benson than BACH, I'm sorry. I remember that.
All right.
You taking BACH?
Yeah, take that BACH. That's good. All right. Alan and then Chris and Claire.
Yeah, also the KSC Brew Festival was, it's another hallmark event. I think this last year was the most successful brew fest the KSC's ever done. And we are creating that brewery block since it's becoming a destination on its own. Is that included?
No. This is nonprofit, too.
So I had a question about the index that you passed out and the economic model. First, the index has this ranking of us on these different kind of indices. Who, and it's in our group, which is 100 to quarter a million, 250,000 population, what other cities are we being compared to in this group where we've come in fourth and second?
Carm, can you answer that?
I can.
We'll probably have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Well, she's up maybe. The other question I had was, where did the economic model come from in terms of calculating all this? Is this a standard model that was built for this purpose and it's been peer-reviewed and all of that, so it's reliable and credible?
It is, and if you look in your thicker packet, it outlines the model that was used and the credibility behind it. It is a unique model in some ways in that it, art and culture activities have a rippling effect. So the economic model isn't just for the event that they have, they have the activity that happens coming to and from the events. So they have an input and an output model that's calculated in this, indirect and direct expenditures.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation because I have maintained for a long time that our quality of life and our quality of livelihood are not competing elements, they're actually mutually compatible. One really does support the other. This is an example of where many companies will choose to come here because the quality of life is to their liking. I've seen that before. I mean, you know, water, of course, power, of course, you know, other kinds of incentives, of course, but quality of life is very important, particularly to upper management in many organizations as well as schools. And so this is the nexus of where you can find that a community really demonstrates that it cares about its community, not only economically, but also in terms of its quality of life. And so I'm always looking to see where we can find those opportunities to balance those two elements because I think they do support each other. I had also thought of the Country Fair and the Eugene Celebration, but I would like to join Alan and think we should have an Oktoberfest, especially once we get our brewery district up and running. I'll be there.
Smooth jazz and brew.
Well, you could have, well, Oktoberfest would be perfect. Yeah, you could have jazz there, too. But I think the key element here is to say that you shouldn't approach quality of life and quality of livelihood as a trade-off, that we somehow have to choose between, but where we're really smart is when we figure out how to make the two actually work together so that one can enhance the other. That way you don't have to make a choice, you actually use one to reinforce, you can actually have your cake and eat it too, so to speak. So I'm very supportive of this, but we want to make sure we do it in a real thoughtful and balanced way, especially with the economic situation that we're in. I know we're going to be approaching a very tough budget, and I think as we approach that budget, we have to think of it in terms of how can we maintain as much of the balance that provides that circular support. So I think this is a timely presentation, comes at a good time. Thank you.
Claire?
Yeah, I think this is pretty exciting, too. I had a former career in theater arts, and it's not a high-paying profession, and, you know, it's important to see the economic activity that's generated. I had a question and then another comment. So you, Renee, said that we only got about 30% of our nonprofits agencies in town to respond to the survey, is that right?
Mm-hmm, which is actually pretty high compared to experience in other communities.
And will we have an opportunity to participate in the survey again in the future?
I'm not sure how often. Carm, you have to remind me of this.
The last one was done four years ago. So I guess my hope is that if we are able to participate again, that we'll find some strategies for getting more participation. I mean, if 30% is good, that's great, but I think the more we can actually have true numbers and accurate representation, I think the better off and the better we'll look because obviously we're very engaged in our arts and cultures here, which is exciting. I mean, it's obvious to anyone who comes to town for, you know, an afternoon, but it's great to see it in black and white. But, you know, I do want to kind of, on the other side, say there's, while this is an important bit of information in terms of the economic activity and how much dollars are circulating, you know, it's just one way to look at our arts and cultures and the value of that. Since Counselor Clark brought in the comparison of the potential hub project, you know, we've got, we're fostering community participation and cohesion, we're creating new artists, we're developing more creativity in our community, and those kinds of benefits, you can't really, it's difficult to put a dollar value on. So, you know, I think I would caution us against using these numbers to compare too much directly to other economic activities because of all the other ancillary benefits that arts and cultures bring to our community.
Betty?
This is really wonderful, and the arts, if there were no economic benefit, it would still be wonderful. That's an additional benefit. But it's, for a community our size, I think what we have is outstanding. I moved here from a community of a similar size 30 years ago, and I was amazed at how much there was, I used to look for something to do when friends wanted to go out on the weekend. And I came here, and it's always a choice of which thing to do. And the things I want to do, I can't do because there's something else I maybe want to do or need to do at the same time. I think it's really wonderful, and this is a happy work session.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
We're going to move into the next part, but I just, of course, I value the things that are not economic about this as well, but I do want to say that one of the things I think we want to do is understand the economic value this has for us, and as we're trying to build, infuse reinvigoration into our downtown, the Arts and Culture District is a really important part of that net vision for that will help us build our economy and will help us. So we'll enjoy all the great stuff that Betty and Claire mentioned and others, but we also can reap increasing economic benefit from the strength of this in our, in our community, and it's no small thing. It's a big thing, and it's one of the things that we can build on because we've got it and we've got the talent and the expertise and all of that. Mike, now, you want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with both you and Claire in that, about the importance of the economic value of arts and cultures as well as all the other benefits and the quality of life. I wanted to point out after some of the comments that were made that it certainly, my comments at the beginning weren't meant to diminish the economic value of arts and cultures, just to the contrary. I was trying to say it has a gigantic value. But I think that perhaps in other conversations, the council may be undervaluing the importance of actually building things, that the economic impact of just one project is the same as an entire year of these efforts by thousands of people. And I'm hopeful that when we can stop the potential for one of these projects, that we understand the magnitude of the effect. Thank you.
I just had forgotten to say something. I really liked Counselor Evans' idea of a signature event. I agree, the BACH Festival is fantastic, but I think there'd be room for more, so I just wanted to say that.
Always room for more. All right.
All right, so let's see. All right. So, yeah, as I mentioned, we do have a number of initiatives going on in the downtown area. We've been focusing that area because we know that arts are really a key to, part of the revitalization story. There's a number of events and venues and employers and customers and a lot of dollars that come to the city core because of those activities. We've been working with our partners to establish an emerging, what is becoming an emerging Arts and Culture District. It hasn't been anointed as such in a formal way, but we know that it is organically growing into that primarily based on the really strong foundation of the services that were there and activities that were there from the beginning, the Shed and the McDonald Theater and the WOW Hall and the Holt Center and the library and various other galleries and performance spaces. But we do see an Arts and Culture District as a tool to really focus on that economic sector, the creative sector, the software development, which we've seen starting to really grow in the downtown, architectural areas and other creative services. So it's not just what you would think of as, you know, a performing arts type of activity. We do see it also as supporting our regional branding efforts around economic prosperity in the downtown. It's one of the goals, especially related to creativity, innovation, and quality of life. So all of those things, keeping those in mind, we've been focusing on short tourism stays, activities that provide short tourism stays, post-secondary education, all of this tying back to the Regional Prosperity Plan, business recruitment and expansion. So the first thing I'd just like to highlight, I'm only going to touch on a few recent things, not everything that's happening, because there's really too much to go through, and some of it's big, some of it's little, but it all has an impact, positive impact. So the first thing, as you've been following, the Lord Libric, which is now Oregon Contemporary Theater, is now open on Broadway. They have a fantastic theater space that is renovated, has come into its own, and they're fully in that space. And if you haven't been, I'd really encourage you to check out what they have going on there, on a key part of the downtown. The first-on-Broadway building, the former Taco Time building, will soon be home to the Bijou Metro, four theaters that will support the original Bijou Theater, another exciting cultural venue that is going in right across from the Commerce Building, Taco Time Building, exciting time for that.
They're on the second floor?
They're on, they'll be on the first floor. And there's, in your AIS and your packet, there's a brief description of most of the projects I'm talking about, so for more detail on that, you can kind of look there. I want to highlight the Suburban Projections Program that Isaac Marquez has been spearheading through our public art. This is a second year that we've done this as a University of Oregon City Partnership, which has really brought life to the downtown during some of our darkest, you know, glumest months, and in particular on, in alleys and parts of the town where activity is really kind of suspect. It's begun to gather national and international interest, which it's a new medium and really a great opportunity. You'll be hearing more about that. Another really exciting...
Exactly, our darkest, glumest months.
I was going to say November.
That's a great description, by the way, too.
November.
And our darkest, glumest alleyways.
And we have some big...
Let's glum more fun.
Yeah, yeah. There are getting fewer of them as our outlook is brighter.
Good job.
Did you like that?
I liked it.
And I was telling some, I think I was telling someone the other day that creativity can be learned. Skill can be learned. So a really exciting project that Nan Lawrence in our planning and development department has been working with Downtown Eugene, Inc., and now the Arts and Business Alliance is an aesthetic lighting project for the downtown that will span from the two main streets, from Broadway, from the Shed to the Oregon Contemporary Theater, and the McDonald Theater on Willamette to the Holt Center. Now, there's four prongs to that project. One would be lighting like this, LED lighting on poles. There's a component that includes lighting in trees that gives a slightly different feel that would be further down on Broadway. Yeah. And parking garages, lighting of parking garages to, for various colors that you could coordinate with whatever events or moods or whatever you would like to do, but really to brighten those spaces up. And then down the road, at some point, future alley lighting, which would be potentially public art-type lighting. So cool things. DEI is taking the lead on this project, and we're hoping that that will be completed in the next, you know, the months to come. So really great project that you should be getting more information on as it progresses. The next project I want to tell you about is called the Duck Print Project. And this is, while it seems like a little project, it's a really cool example of partnerships. Donna DuBois, who is the Oregon Teacher of the Year a couple of years ago, got a grant from the Smithsonian to do a storytelling project with her fourth and fifth grade students at Camas Ridge Elementary School. Throughout the last year, they created stories, videos, they narrated 20 different historical sites, primarily in the downtown, but throughout Eugene, and signs are going up here in the next couple of months with QR codes that talk about the historical significance of the sites. The signs will be attached near those facilities, and it's really a great project. It's been a collaboration between the Lane County Historical Museum, Bell &amp; Funk, Imagine Images, the city, the school, and a variety of others. So it's a really cool thing, and it's done in the kids, the fourth and fifth grade kids' voices, so you'll see more on that as well. And then the last couple of things I wanted to talk about, one, actually, I'm going to have Carm give you an update on, are ongoing efforts in the downtown around Summer in the City, parks, blocks, activities in the summer, just as a way to generate more activity and excitement. Because that's what we're all about. That's how we roll, right? Just a little history on Summer in the City. We continue to meet our goals. 2012 brought six downtown events, 15 live music events, and a couple of dance parties. There was community engagement and active participation like never before. We had over, almost 50... We had over, almost 50 community partners throughout the summer that helped us in these efforts. And the plans for this year are, are firming up and I think, I think you'll find them exciting. It's, it's, it behooves us to, to participate in these events and tell our friends and you will, if you follow us on Facebook, as I'm sure many of you do, you can like the Cultural Services page and find out what events are coming. That page also mentions different organizations' activities, too, not just events sponsored by Cultural Services, a little sideline there. Recent innovation is the Park for Lunch program that Community Events does. Last year was the first year and you can, you can buy your lunch or bring your lunch to the park blocks. This year's, this year's theme on Tuesday will be the market, of course. Wednesday's theme is relax. And while it's relax, we're kind of getting on the let's move bandwagon and have been working with recreation to provide some activities, exercise activities and, and just, you know, movement from, everything from Tai Chi to maybe a dodgeball game, we're not sure about that yet. But we're also working with Steve Alfroth in the Wellness Center through, of the city to, to provide some activity there as well. Thursday's theme is play and it'll be focused on many children's events because last year there were a lot of daycare centers that brought, brought kids there during the noon hour for them to move around a little bit and enjoy the, the entertainment. Let's see. The, the thing I want you to know about all of these activities is that the message we're getting from EPD is that they're helping. They're assisting in their efforts to change the tenor of these locations. The downtown center, it used to be a problem area for them and they say it's getting better and better and largely due to these activities that are, are taking place down there and kind of replacing the, the activity that is a little less desirable. Okay, and then the event, the one thing that I really wanted to highlight that will be new, a signature event, the Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene has, is in the midst of producing a month-long, the month of August, artist and culinary workshops, which will take place, like I said, the month of August. It's going to be called, the name is now official, Create Eugene. They anticipate it'll draw tourists to come and participate. The goal is over 500 people out from out of town, coming with overnight stays, developing hotel packages and the likes for them. But we have an abundance of creative service providers in the community that this, we believe will become a signature event for the community around art tourism, brewery industry, culinary industry, visual arts, performing arts to some degree. So you'll be seeing more on that, but we anticipate it starting in the month of August this coming summer. Yeah.
So, I got you in the queue, Greg. Just want to make a few comments. First of all, I'm, I'm just hugely appreciative and excited about all of this and I think the, your Create Eugene is, is a wonderful sort of link to our economic development as well with our food cluster work and, and localization of food and all of that. So I think it just fits really nicely with what we're trying to do in a lot of different places. I wanted to tell you that yesterday I was at the new business, is on the top floor of the Woolworth Building. It's called Three Center Active and it's built, it's a business that does enterprise, enterprise mobile solutions and helping businesses communicate with consumers on their mobile device. It's very innovative and the company's been called the number one most promising company in the country by Forbes. But the thing that was interesting, when I went over there yesterday, they wanted to show me what they were doing, is the guy from there wanted to tell me, tell me that they chose Eugene because of all the activities and all the development, all the things that are going on in our city. It has the, the feeling and vibrancy that drove them to want to, to locate here and have their business here. And the second thing the guys said, who were working there, sort of the 30-ish crowd, and they said, "Are you having Summer in the City? Because we love that and we want to have a dodgeball team and this really is why we wanted to locate downtown."
You never know.
There's a dodgeball.
You just never know.
So what I want to say, I, I just want to take that as a really good illustration of how what you're doing attracts people to want to do business in our downtown, do business in our community and, and makes them want to locate and live here. And those, those are the goals we've had for a long time. I couldn't, he offered to give a, you know, an advertisement for us if we wanted it because they felt so strongly about...
Been trying to find that guy for the last 24 hours since we heard that, so.
And then the, you know, I've had a big thing for a long time about how we don't tell our story well enough, so I'm really thrilled with the duck print work and all that combination and, and so happy that that moved forward from that first meeting we had. And then the lighting thing, I just think that's fantastic and I love the way it looks. And I also wanted to say about that, so here's something that I've been thinking about. You know that blank site at the Holt?
On Seventh?
What if we, and you know, you could do projection from right across the street on that, right?
We talked about that one, so.
Seems easy, yeah.
But I wondered if, I wondered if, yeah, we've been talking about it, but I haven't, what I'm thinking about is it can be like a, you could either think of it in terms of something permanent on that side that is done in that way, or we, it's one of those things that we could take, like we've done other outdoor art, and, and have a, a contest and actually, you know, show people's wonderful pieces of, of laser art or whatever on the side of our most prominent performing arts center, so.
Tried to do the suburban projection on that wall and the difficulty was finding a place from which to project.
Did the garage not do that from across?
Chogan's new art.
Yeah, it's...
New guys across the street.
Anyway.
It is a great idea, though, yeah. So, yeah, we've got all, we've got different ideas about that wall.
Right, I was just thinking.
Urban garden and all kinds of things.
Because it's sort of a place that you, it's hard to think of doing something hard, permanent, but not, may not be hard to think about how you use some of the new technology you're already using to create art in that space that would contribute to the whole arts and culture district.
And there's a giant LED on the side of there.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Thank you.
Yes, cool. All right. Who did I have in the queue? Greg?
Three things quickly. I really like to report, Carm, Beer and Dodgeball Festival, I'm really getting into this. Do I get to throw, do I get to throw the first ball at Alan?
Handoff?
Well, yeah, I think it's a great combination.
I think Ben Stiller made a movie of it.
Counselor Clark has been looking for more people for his team.
I did invite counselors to join the team, yes.
Okay. Well, on a more serious note, you know, I really like the idea of Create Eugene and I think that there may be some ways that we can incorporate more of our youth in that kind of event and, you know, build some, you know, specific events within the event so that we can increase and engage and maximize our youth participation. I think also it'll also be a great forum for engaging some of our seniors as well. So I think this is a broad kind of spectrum that we really can, can get into. Going back to your last slide here, I'm not sure if that's tied to your primal scream, scream. Can you, can you tell me what that is?
It's a thriller.
It's a thriller.
Oh, is that the thriller thing?
Yeah.
See, I, I didn't, I didn't get that, so now I'm, I'm good with that. And then the last thing I wanted, I want to touch on is something that, you know, is kind of near and dear to my heart, and that is, how do we incorporate more collaboration with the fairgrounds? I realize that it's not city property, but it's in, in the city, it's landlocked and we have, to my, you know, knowledge of having been on that board for four years, there's various parts of the program at the fairgrounds that has been struggling. And I think that if we kind of combine and, and work through some efforts to look more at doing, I'm not sure what you, you guys are doing right now, maybe you can give us kind of an overview of, quick overview of what may be occurring between the fairgrounds and the city right now in terms of those kinds of collaborations, because I, I think that we've got some underutilization of that facility as well as some, you know, of course, needed upgrades in terms of the facility and its capital assets. So we won't solve that problem for the county, but I think that it is a discussion that needs to happen in terms of how do we engage our fairgrounds in a more proactive way.
You know, we do, so outside of the fair, I know we partner significantly during that event, less so during the rest of the year, and it is an area that, you know, does have some area for improvement probably for both of us. So I can't give you an example of currently what we're doing in partnership with them. We've in the past partnered on facilities, particularly around sports-related facilities at the fairgrounds, not currently in their, in that capacity today, but there, we, we do talk periodically and there's always, we're always hoping for opportunities to collaborate.
Okay, Alan?
Thanks, Renee. This stuff is great. This isn't actually related to this, but I just want to make an announcement. Tonight at, from 6:00 to 8:00 is the Willamette Street redesign workshop that's happening from 6:00 to 8:00 at South Eugene High School in the auditorium. So I think all the counselors got a...
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, sorry.
Yeah.
All the counselors got an invitation, but for community folks, South Eugene High School, 6:00 to 8:00 on the Willamette Street redesign.
I just want to say thank you. This was really exciting and fun. Thank you very much.
I'm happy to follow up with those 29 cities, too.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.